I'll call the meeting to order, please rise for the President.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Boss.
Pippiya.
Here.
Graham.
Here.
Hughes.
Present.
Frye.
Schroller.
Here.
Throm.
Here.
Barnes.
Here.
All right, the first item is the regular minutes from September 9th. Does anyone have any amendments? Okay, I'll give you mine. Page one of the minutes. On number one, the public comments, just the last word changed tomorrow to the next day. And then on business and discussion items, under Mayor Grun, put a hyphen and then coma, and then just add one sentence that says, "Mayor Grun reported that at a recent fire and police committee, CM Barnes and CM Pippiya noted that they had attended a coma training and understood that all council members could attend and participate in all committee discussions."
Where do you want that?
Right before that. Just add that sentence to explain why.
At the beginning?
Yes.
You will give me that sentence, so I don't have to write it down.
And the second sentence just changes slightly. "Mayor Grun contacted Attorney Deborah Barnes at the League of Kansas Municipalities to clarify coma laws for the city committee meetings." And then on page three, there's just two semicolons on the second line and number one, under appropriations ordinance. Second line.
I'm still writing what you tell me.
I'll give you that as well.
Now, what are you telling me?
Page three, there's a double semicolon here, second line, under appropriations ordinance, number one.
Oh, here.
And then, under city administrator, on number two, the bid was 216,759. Once I put 59, you'll have to look that up. 759. Because you put the estimate in there.
Oh, the estimate.
Yeah.
And you want the.
Yeah, and the only other thing on that page, and then on the first line of page four, I just think you need to put Professor's full name, which is Professor Sousmita Rishi.
Okay, where do I find, do you know how that is?
Yeah.
Okay. I was gonna say, because they've never called her anything.
It should be one of your emails, spelled out.
But just so her name.
Because they always just put Sous on my emails.
So I'll have it for you, just so that we.
Yeah, I was gonna say, because I don't, that's all they've ever called her that I've seen, so.
Okay, then, on page four, on number five, on the third line, you just have to add, "Mayor Grun shared that Clint Hibbs reported to the fire committee that after, including the soft cost, blah, blah, blah." And then, after it says, "The city share will be at least 1 million as a CDBG grant maximum 600,000," we need to add a sentence to say, "The council discussed several methods of funding the city's share of the project," before the consensus was to move on.
Wait a minute, say that again.
I'll give it to you after, it just says, "The council discussed several methods of funding the city's share of the project," because there was a lot of discussion before that, before we came to that consensus. And then, page five, on water and wastewater, Joanne Lacy is J, O, capital A, and then an L-A-C-Y.
The estimate.
Just to correct her spelling. And then, on that one, 1, 2, 3, 4, fifth line, right before Charlie Fredericks, you just have to say, "Mayor Grun spoke with Charlie Fredericks," so that they know that he wasn't in attendance from Habitat and Humanity, and he said Habitat will help Joanne with the new syrup supply. And the last line, and that CA St. John will have the city fill in the dirt. And then, on page six, on number two, just delete that last line. Number one, I didn't question it, if you want to change it, it should say that, you know, these comments showed, but I think you can just pull it in, it doesn't change what's being discussed. And on cemetery and airport, you can, on the second sentence, say, "CM Pippiya added that it had been leaking, blah, blah, blah." And round table number two, just add, "Mayor Grun noted that Institute 4 would be lining." Those are my changes. I would entertain a motion to approve.
Mayor, only one problem I saw was on page two, number one, line four, this is, must be within 100 feet of property line, his property is 220 feet from his property.
Now, what are you saying it should say?
Probably.
No, but you're right.
His line is, and his property is 220 feet from the sewer.
Okay, so you're saying, on the very end of that, 220 feet from the sewer line?
Yeah.
That's what you wanted to say? Okay. All right.
Well, that's what happens, you need to.
Thank you. All right, now I have.
Diane's got one.
Oh, Diane.
On the, on there, the skittles in the park, I didn't say many complaints, I just said there were complaints.
Okay. All right. Reported that there were complaints, we can pull many, what else?
That's all.
Oh, anything else? Okay, I would entertain a motion to approve as amended.
Move to approve, regular minutes, September 9th, 2019 meeting, as amended.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? 6-0. And then, the special meeting is on page nine. I have three small changes. Let's see, 1, 2, 3, 4. The fifth line, in the paragraph, in the one, oh, that's what I was saying, in the paragraph that says, "Mayor Grun asked city attorney," so it's a 1, 2, 3, 4, fifth line.
Okay.
It says, "Because it's, it has run its course," it's, you have to either put an apostrophe or put, "It has run its course."
That's a direct quote, so I'll put an apostrophe.
Okay.
That's an exact quote.
Okay. And then, the last line, assessed, not accessed, A-S-S-E-S-S. And then, 1, 2, 3, on the third line of.
The next one.
The yeas, after Graham, it should be a colon there, to be consistent with the rest.
Oh.
Do you guys have any other changes? I would entertain a motion to approve as amended.
Move to approve as amended.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? 6-0, all right. Minutes done, public comments. If there's anyone in the audience that would like to share for five minutes, you can come to the podium, give your name, your address, and your ward. All right, we'll move on to business and discussion items. The first one up is Maureen Christ. Is Mark coming too for moral support?
We need moral support. I'm Maureen Christ, this is Mark Kaufman, we're here from the Blue River Rail Trail, and we are asking permission to use the Marysville Main Street building as a trailhead. Since the trail is coming into town now, we need a place to send people to start, to get onto the trail. It's an ideal location, it would take very little to begin use of it. Bathrooms are there, there's a glass door which makes it safe, makes it very visible from the street. You know, we might need some signage, we'd like to have a water fountain in there, which would be great for trail users, as well as, you know, when there's activities and events downtown, that would be a great addition as well. I spoke with the Convention and Tourism Board, as well as Michelle Weitzel. The request was that there be a deadbolt put on her office, it's just a standard interior door lock now, just to provide a little more safety for that office, but we're excited about the possibility, and I think it could be great for the community as well, as visitors come into town.
So you want to use the restrooms of the bulletin board, you don't really have one of office there, you just want availability of the bathrooms of the bulletin board, right?
Exactly, yeah.
And, Austin, who currently cleans these restrooms?
Michelle.
Michelle?
Yep.
So you'll change that?
Um.
That's not really under your job description.
If we keep, that's what I would probably recommend is changing that, if it's gonna be basically a public facility.
And then, we, I certainly supply all the bathroom supplies there?
I gotta look at the contract, but I feel like they maintain it. They're either, I think Main Street, in their contract, maintains it.
Maintains it?
Yeah.
Well, I don't know if they want to take on that responsibility, cleaning it for public use, I don't know. You might have to find that out and make sure.
I mean, if anything, I mean, the only thing I could see is.
Adding it to the cemetery and park.
Adding it to the cemetery and park.
Yeah. I'd be happy to hear that. So what hours would it be open? Like, it wouldn't be open 24 hours a day, right? It'd be closed when we lock the bathrooms, or at dusk, or what would it do?
Well, the trail is open dusk to dawn.
So would the police do, be responsible?
I don't know when they, I would add it on to the police's rotation, so I want to say.
I said something in here about that.
It's probably dusk to dawn.
And that's okay, you don't think that, you think that's okay?
I think that's.
Dawn to dusk.
Dawn to dusk.
Dawn to, do the right one first, dawn to dusk.
Yeah.
Okay, well, just as long as, you know, we have somebody that will clean them, other than Michelle, and will lock them up, other than Michelle.
Will it?
And the deadbolt is okay?
I'll have to look at the door, it should be able to.
It's a hollow core door, you wouldn't want to put a deadbolt on it, because it'll go right through it.
Yeah.
I have to look at the door.
We'll have to put a new door on it?
They have to.
If it's hollow core.
I think.
And then, you guys, so what do you guys think about it?
Will it be open?
Wait, this isn't a conversation with you, it's a conversation of council, yes.
I'd like to ask one quick, is, it's not temporary, this, is the deal with the depot, is that off?
No, I think that we're still open to that, but it seems like that's a little ways off.
Well, that's what I mean, is this temporary, or is it something that you want to make, gonna be permanent?
I guess that's yet to be determined. I think it's ideal whether we have something else at the depot or not, the location is great, and I don't think that there maybe, there could also be a restroom at the depot, I think. I don't know exactly what their plans are at this point, we've kind of had some discussion with them, but.
I just wondered if it was permanent or not, you know.
Isn't there, didn't there used to be kind of a plexiglass dividing the hallway from the office?
It's all, it's all still divided, there's just a hallway.
I realize that, but if somebody wanted to get in.
You mean to break in?
Yeah.
They put bulletin boards up over the front side of it.
Yeah, they covered it, yeah.
Is it pretty solid now?
It's, it's pretty well covered up, and, I mean, with, if you take the bulletin boards down, it's still that glass that protected Ruth, or the secretary, or whoever was behind it, at the police station.
Look at the photo, Austin, it looks like that door back there, that Michelle's office is a steel door. Okay.
So, so you're saying, we wouldn't?
We wouldn't have to put any door, then, just put a deadbolt in it.
Put a deadbolt in it.
And then, I don't think it's bad I did have a water fountain in there anyway, we don't have any water fountains downtown anywhere.
Yeah.
We don't need to pay 100% for it, though, I don't think.
No?
I'm sorry, but.
Yeah, I was gonna say, is anybody responsible for putting this in?
The, probably a water fountain that we would want in is at least $1,000, for the fountain alone.
Time you get one with a bottle filler and all that on it, you know, the price goes up on them.
Yeah, $1,000, that's what we're looking at out there.
Did you put this one in, or did they put this one in?
That one.
That picture.
I put that one in.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Is that kind of what you're putting in here, Austin?
I can see putting in a water fountain.
Page 14.
Yeah, that's about what we're putting, what we're gonna put in here, yes.
Okay. What were you gonna say, Diane?
I say, I can see putting in a water fountain, but I don't know if we need to put in a.
Are you ordering it from, can you order, add to, and maybe get a discount for ordering?
We're looking at going through a provider that actually has a storefront, so that we can find parts and stuff, so.
You mean for this one?
Yeah, for this one.
But I'm just saying, if you're ordering one for here, maybe you could order two.
Who's gonna, who's gonna pay for the plumbing to put it in?
Right.
I mean, just because you buy a water fountain for $1,000, you may have another $500, $600 to put it in, by the time you put your, run your water line, run your sewer line, you know, all that sewer down there is buried in the floor.
Are you proposing to put it?
This one is on the inside, just opposite that wall, like where that electrical is.
Between the bathrooms?
Is the bathroom sink.
Okay.
So it's very close by.
Okay. Look, we still gotta get it plumbed in.
Absolutely.
I mean, it's not, snap your fingers, you know, you're gonna have to run, you're gonna have to get water down the wall somehow.
So are you requesting them to make a donation, is that what you're doing?
That's what I'm looking at.
He's trying to see if you want to make a donation to the water fountain.
Well, we are a 501(c)(3), and so, right now, our, I would say we can't, and that doesn't mean that we couldn't still use this as a trailhead without that.
Oh, I don't, yeah.
It's not, yeah.
I'm fine with that, but I just, I don't think we need to throw $1,500 at it right away, or, either.
Right now, our funds are committed to getting the fence up on this new section of trail and maintenance, and we don't have the funds to put that in, that was just, you know.
I mean.
I'll put the opposite side, it'd be kind of nice to have a bathroom with, or water fountain, we don't have any water fountains.
Well, you use it for other events, too, the barbecue and all of those things, too, so it.
We had, Saturday, there was the Homestead 100 ride, came down from Beatrice.
Through Marysville?
Well, they came down the trail and back.
Oh, okay.
They rode the wagon wheel in the back, and it was 50 plus riders.
They were looking for water?
They were looking for water. I wasn't here to see how it went, but I'm assuming they probably, you know, got the kit from the wagon wheel, because like I said, there's just no water fountain down there.
Yeah.
What can't you put, just those little spigot things on it? You know, the little, little arch things.
Well, this one would have a spigot for your mouth, what it also has is just where you could use the, like, a reusable water bottle.
Yeah.
So it has, the front of it has the little spigot thing.
Yeah.
They actually have one of these at the high school, interested in seeing.
I was gonna say, you're right, I remember seeing. So, you guys, what's your takeaway? We can approve the trailhead, and then we can approve the water fountain separately, I mean, they're not.
I'm fine with that.
They're not separate, right?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, okay. So I don't think the deadbolt's gonna be a hard thing, right, Austin?
Uh, that may be a commercial lock on that, too. Yeah, I don't even know if you need a deadbolt, if that's a metal door, and you put a good grade lock on there, really, if they went into it that bad, they're probably gonna get in there. We'll take, we'll take a look. We'll take a look.
Okay, well, do you want to make a motion to approve using as a trailhead, as requested?
I move that we allow the Blue River Trail, Trailhead to be at the Marysville Main Street office, with opening for the restrooms and lobby area, from dusk to dawn. Dawn to dusk.
Dawn to dusk.
I'll get her.
Is there a second?
I'll such an ass.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? 6-0, okay, does anybody want to suggest a water fountain, it's your call.
I'll make a motion that we purchase a water fountain with a bottle filler for installation, we have to make a motion for.
Or do you want?
Cost of installing it, too, or.
Do you want Austin to bring some options to us next week?
Well, that would be fine, too.
Do you want, how about if we do that, we'll vote on it next week, how about that? So we'll proceed with that next week, if you want to come, or not next week, next meeting, I was just saying. So you put that on next meeting to bring some options?
We'll see if it's possible first.
And cost, you know what it is, right?
We'll see if we can run water and all that, too.
Yeah, we'll look into that.
Okay, perfect. So you got your trailhead, you just don't have water yet.
I just.
Although, there's water in the sink, you're not totally.
You'll probably want to take some sheetrock off.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thanks for coming. All right.
Oh, hey, Mark, did anybody tell you about the brush down by the, the brush that's down by the covered bridge?
Underneath the bridge?
Yeah, there's, there's some limbs down, I just thought.
We'll check it.
Says the man who walks the trail. Okay, Kathy Unger, you're up, our pool manager, thanks for preparing your year-end report.
Madam Mayor Grun, members of the council and city administrator, Austin, of course you know I'm Kathy Unger, and I did report, prepare a report from you, I was wondering if you had any questions, concerns, additions.
Well, I love the details, because I'm a detailed person, but, so the ninth, in the first, number one, you had the 9,149 patrons, that, all these others, other numbers are part of the 9,149?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, and I do want you to know that these are my figures that I log in, so they're not specifically what maybe went to Deb here at City Hall, because what we did, there's no way with the computer program that we have down there to log individual pass numbers, and that's what I tried to maintain this year. So depending on the day, who was working, you know, and as busy as we were, some of them numbers might have not gotten put on my report versus what was put on the report that is turned in daily to the city office. So there was probably, there was some discrepancy. Some days, we were right on zero, some days, we might be long, I might be long a little, I might be short a little, you know, so there, these are my numbers versus the actual numbers that City Hall would report.
Well, I think it's amazing that that morning swim had a 1354 participants, that's huge.
That's awesome.
So we're glad for that. And I did ask Cindy to go ahead and do an analysis of the concessions, just because that's been a point of contention for a while, but I think, you said that you sold out of all the other items?
Yes.
I mean, great job, we used to, I don't know if you remember when we first had the pool, but we had hundreds, if not thousands, of stuff we distributed, so I really appreciate that. And then, the repairs, so we have 28 items that need to be repaired for next summer?
According to what I consider repairs, yes, now.
Wow. Are those things we can do over the winter time?
I believe so, I mean, the biggest, the biggest repair is going to be like restoring the slides, all three slides, the Nemo, and the dump buckets. Another one that I, I would suggest doing is all the grouting on the deck around the whole pool, because a lot of the grouting is coming up, and it's, water's getting down there, and algae and mold is getting down there. So I think, you know, that's another thing. You know, a lot of these things probably can be done before next season, maybe some this fall, but a lot of it, the city departments can do, so, you know, that's, that's gonna be your main cost, and, and the two diving boards will have to be replaced. Now, they've already replaced the steps on the diving boards, or some of them? On, on the higher diving board, both steps were replaced there. The smaller diving board, they were not, but they weren't in any need to be replaced. Whether they will consider doing that, since they've never been replaced, when they buy the diving boards, that would be something up to you guys.
Okay.
You probably don't have any idea how much restoring those slides are gonna cost, do you?
I actually, no, I do not. Okay, Austin, I gave him the.
Thirty thousand. Thirty thousand dollars?
At least.
So those only last for, we've only had the pool up in four years, right?
Right.
Four years, every four years? Okay.
Approximately.
I'm sorry, wait.
Yeah, I had given him the names that had been recommended, who does slide restoration. A lot of it's gonna depend on who is managing it, and who's taking care of it, and if they stay on top of it also.
Why do you say it like that?
Are you planning on coming back next year? I would not want to comment on that at this time. No, it just, you know, if, if, you have to have somebody that's on top of everything, on top of all the repairs, on top of making sure everything is maintained, so.
So is that a chemical thing that you just brought up, is that a big thing, too?
Yes.
That's a big thing, okay.
Is there any way we can get the grouting done this fall, before winter hits?
That's true, for the water to get in there.
Yeah. More water we can keep out, anytime water goes down and freezes, it expands.
I have to see what temperature the, the stuff has to go down, because that was the contention last time we were doing the grouting, is it had to be between here and here, and.
Have we replaced it one time already?
We, we've done around the poles of the, we've done that.
And you're saying the hole, all the way, all the way around?
Around the poles, too, if I'm correct.
Yes, if you, if you walk around, you can see, because I noticed it more when I was power washing, but yeah, it's the hole around the whole pool.
Well, I think we probably should get on that, I agree with you, Kathy, so.
Because that water's gonna get, I mean, it's just gonna keep shifting and blow the.
Protect, protect.
It'll move the stainless steel and crack it and everything else when it goes, so.
So, maybe you can bring something back to us about grouting?
I can, I can, yeah, I can see how we're gonna move forward with the repairs, yes.
Yeah, so, so she gave you a list of all the.
The slides that you recommended spring. She gave us a list.
Yes, I would not do the slides this winter, I would wait till spring.
So did you make a list on, on this list, you gave it to Austin, and you, you identified what should be done in the fall versus spring?
No, I did not, because I don't know.
We can take care of it.
Did you?
I didn't signify which one, but I knew the slides needed to wait till the spring.
Okay. All right, well, you'll go through it, kind of get an idea of what you might need to do this fall.
Yep.
And you'll let us know as soon as you've made a decision about coming back, I hope?
Yes.
Because trying to find a pool manager is very difficult.
And you did an awesome job.
And, wait, I wanted to say that first, you did an awesome job.
Thank you, yes, we appreciate it a lot.
Austin, the piece that froze last winter and broke.
Oh, yeah.
The heater part.
Right.
Did we take the caps off the end of it?
I will, I'm gonna double, and we're gonna triple check that.
Make sure those are off this year, so they don't crack.
Yeah.
Yeah, because that's expensive.
So if condensation creates up above, it can run down, at least it'll have a way out, instead of laying in the bottom and freezing.
I will make sure we, and I'm, yeah, we don't want to do that again.
So are you winterizing the pool with our staff right now, or is it done, or what, tell me what the status of.
It's been drained, and everything's been taken apart, I don't know as far as inside the building yet, but everything outside has been taken down.
As far as my stuff that I, I completed about a week ago, but all this other stuff has to be done by the city crews.
So, are you basically done with your stuff, then?
Yes.
Okay, you're done, and all the outside is done, and maybe the building still needs to be done?
I haven't gotten a report on that, I just know they've been through, drained everything, and we'll triple check all the, anything that'll hold.
What was that called, that cracked, do you remember?
Exchanger, wasn't it?
Heat exchanger, yeah.
I just assume take the ends off, so if anything condensates, it can run out of there.
Instead of cracking, yes, I agree. Well, Kathy, thanks again, thanks for your report, I love details.
Thanks, Kathy, appreciate it.
Thank you, Kathy.
Thank you. We'll see you next year.
All right. The next item is ordinance number 84. And there's a new one on our, 1884, I'm sorry. Do you want to tell us what you changed here, Craig?
Uh, yes. Simple, like one word switch. The second paragraph where it began to, whereas a written consent to annexation, that one, I think previously, the previous form said-
Request.
A written request or just a request for annexation, which, I know, it sounds like I'm splitting hairs, but the written consent to annexation or a petition for annexation is what is required by the statute 12250, I think, to do a consent annexation like this. So just a being, first nickety.
I like words. I like words. Okay.
That's the only change though.
To approve this 1884 as amended?
Move to approve ordinance 1884 as amended.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Here.
Graham?
Here.
Hughes?
Yes.
Frye?
Troller?
Yes.
From?
Yes.
Arn?
Yes.
Were those, just to clarify, were those yeses?
Yes, yes, yes. Yeah, it's just-
She started it and I started and she was like, I just mimicked.
So there was 60 yeses? Okay.
Easy mistake. It's half here.
Okay. So we have no notices and hearings. On the consent agenda before you approve it, I just, there was one phrase that I wanted to ask about. It says, we're supposed to be approving this for the City of Marys Law?
Listen.
This model resolution?
Yes. Just mitigation. Mitigation, yeah.
And it says, whereas the City of Marys Law fully participated in the FEMA prescribed mitigation planning process to prepare this multi-hazard mitigation plan, did we?
Yes. Me, Todd, or Todd, David, and I all went to their planning meetings.
Okay. That's just, was my only question.
Yep.
Aren't we already a part of this?
Yeah, it's just a, it's a re-up.
Okay.
Yep.
It's a re-up.
I was going to say, because I thought we were, because, you know, when they bought all those houses out down here, we have all these vacant FEMA lots.
Now, this doesn't affect us wanting to get rid of those FEMA lots?
No, this is, this is just a, a regional mitigation plan, yeah.
Resolution. So that we have, we work together?
It's more, yeah, it's more like a response.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that when we approved this, that we did participate.
Yep, we participated.
So you're saying we did. Okay, so I'd entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Move to approve consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
All, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Six oh. All right. Presentation of appropriations ordinance. I have two quick questions. I looked up at the CIPP in our budget, and we had that coming out of sewer revenue, not sewer replacement.
Right. That's, it didn't, not going to come out of there?
It's coming out of sewer replacement.
It should be.
The 266?
That could be. That's where Sandy took it. I don't know.
So it doesn't change the amount, it just-
Change where it comes from.
Where it's coming out of. So that the CIPP should come out of sewer revenue, which is how we had it?
Correct.
And the only other question I had was the Midland, the Midland GIS solutions?
Uh huh.
So this is the, we're paying them off?
Where they, where they mapped it. We're still, we've still got to pay them for their website. So they'll have all the information put on the website, what they just gathered.
Well, they say deliverables, like in the contract. It said deliverables. It says these documents and wall maps and, and training.
If you want to pull that payment, I would be, I think that'd be fine.
Because I haven't seen anything on this, any work done or, for $29,000, I thought we should at least see what they've done.
Well, I mean, they went out and marked everything. They, they mapped everything. We know that, but-
But the deliverables?
We don't have to deliver those yet.
Well, I don't think we should pay them without the deliverables.
Yeah. That's fine.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think so.
Do you want to pull it totally from the ordinance?
Pull it totally.
So we want to pull 29790, is that the final?
We still are going to owe them money, more than that, because of the website and all that stuff.
Yeah, well, can you bring us stuff? You know, surely there's something that we can see, product?
When they, when they give me the product.
Okay.
Yeah. I should be able to send everybody what, what they give us. But yeah, you can pull that.
Yeah, and since it's supposed to show, I would love to see how it maps everything out, to try to understand how this mapping does for our city, because like the water and sewer, I've never looked.
You'll be able to see it.
And will the water and sewer combine with it? So we'll see everything on what's in that?
They'll be able to pull that information, yes.
Well, that'll be awesome. So, anyway, so if we pull the 29790, I come 52666097, is that what you got Cindy? Or did you not print your calculator?
I did it from the bottom number. That's not going to work. I did it after the, I did not.
Do you come up with 52666097?
Yeah.
And then that's just changing that one from sewer replacement? The amount doesn't change, it's just the category?
Right.
Okay. Okay, I would entertain a motion for the appropriations.
Another question?
Oh, okay.
Nelson Power and Light fixed decorative streetlights Broadway contractor hit during CIPP.
Right.
I know they hit them. Are they responsible for fixing them? Are we going to build them?
Nope. Nope, they're not responsible, because they were not marked.
Okay. The lights weren't on there?
The lights are not marked, were not marked. That's why when they put it back, I had them put a line through there, a locator.
Oh, you mean they weren't on our map of down below?
Right. They did, they did not, they did not mark them.
Okay, I'm just curious.
Yeah. That was, that was us, because somebody doesn't put located line in there.
I just-
We've had trouble with those decorated lights.
Yes, we have. And this, when they put it back, they actually put it back two feet below.
Grade.
The grade, yes.
And did they put it in a tube? Remember, some of our problems on Main Street is they're not in a-
It's all in conduit.
Conduit.
This one actually went below the gas line that got hit. But, so, actually, the gas company put a nice scratch in the top of it when they were uncovering their gas main, but no, no serious damage. But yeah, we, it is now locatable right there, and hopefully, we won't have to fix that again.
Hopefully, it's in there for a long time, for a very long term.
Okay. I would entertain a motion to approve the appropriations ordinance as amended.
Move to approve appropriation ordinance 3707 as amended.
And the new amount is 52660660.97.
There you go.
Second.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Yes.
Graham?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Troller?
Yes.
From?
Yes.
Arn?
Yes.
Six oh. Okay, Austin?
First thing up is the replacement of the computers at City Hall and Police Department. We had two bidders for, for this project. The low bidder was Network Computer Solutions with a bid of $19,882.27 for, excuse me, for the computers that we specified. NCS also submitted two other bids for our consideration. One bid just added a five-year warranty, and that came to $21,001.59. And the other had computers NCS felt were equivalent to what we had specified with a five-year warranty as well. And that actually came in lower than the original bid at $19,763.37. And after looking through and comparing the, the original, what we specified to their equivalent, I think that equivalent bid would be our best option. I mean, the, the processing chip is a little bit different, probably lower qual, slightly lower quality, depending on where you look. But it actually comes with a better graphics card, which is pretty good.
Excuse me.
So it, it kind of evened itself out. And that equivalent bid came with a five-year warranty that, a five-year warranty that the original specs did not. So that actually made it a little bit better.
So you're swapping slower processing for better graphics?
Just, no, just a little.
It adds a gap where there are processing and graphics, but-
It's a neg, just looking at it, if you compare the two chips that were there, the equivalent was better in certain aspects than the, the original. And it's just a different way of processing. I don't think we'll, I don't think we in the office or in, in the police department will be able to tell.
And you don't think that the other bidder has a disadvantage for you considering a different option?
Their labor is what sets them apart.
I saw that installation, $8,400.
Yes. And, and I feel it's fair, because NCS is already the lowest bid. So we're, we're going to choose, if we're going to do a full, if, original to original, we would choose NCS anyways. So if it was, if it was Networks Plus that was the lowest bidder and NCS submits a, an equivalent bid-
Counteroffer.
To bring it down, that I feel would not be okay.
Are you guys okay with that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Not a matter.
Yes.
What are we doing about the old stuff?
Um, some of it will be slightly upgraded, so our, our departments will have a better computer than they have right now. So we'll save money that way, sort of passing it on, slightly upgrading it, because they don't use the computers like we do.
So you're saying you're taking the computers out of City Hall and putting out the department's offices?
Some of them. Yeah, well, the, two probably get, get passed along.
Street Department.
Street Department and Parks Department. Yeah. They don't, they don't have the, the necessity for the computer as, as we do. So the, it's not, it's going to be better than what they have right now.
So there's, there's none of us going to go get and trade it in?
There's a possibility for that. I'm, I'm going to see if we can find somebody to reuse it. So we might be able to get some money back for them. But there's no guarantee because it's-
They'd have to build a building to store all these computers that we-
No, we, we're not going to store them anywhere. It's, we're going to find a, either a home for them, or if nobody wants to buy them, they're going to get recycled.
So you're going to use two of them and then possibly try to look for a trade-in or someplace to sell them or something?
Yep, something like that.
Okay.
But with the antiquity, the antiquity rate of computers, it's a challenge.
Probably.
Well, I know they'll be probably back in two or three years anyway. Yeah.
But how long have we had the computers that we have now?
Five or six years.
That's all?
Yeah.
I did notice that in the budget, or we budgeted 16,000, so we're coming out higher than budgeted.
Right.
What we budgeted to spend.
Right. Which, I mean, is, is not that much higher. We do, the, the cost to upgrade this room right here is turning out, for the electronics, is turning out higher than expected. So I'm, I'm going to turn, turn, either not do the upgrades here or tone down what we would do here this year and plan in the future, not, maybe not 2020, but 2021.
So some of the budget that was used to increase technology here is going to go to offset the increase over budget number here?
Yes, yep.
You guys okay with that? All right, that's, that's all my questions. Anybody else have questions?
Move to accept the low bid of $19,763.37 from NCS to replace the computers at City Hall and the Police Department.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Six oh. All right.
All right, next one. I did receive for the Art Center, I did receive bids for the windows themselves, but I had trouble finding a contractor that wanted to, to bid the project. And in discussion with our staff, we think our staff can, can handle this job and get the windows installed, rather than contracting it out. So I was looking to see if, if the council was willing to do that direction. That way we can order the windows. I'll bring the window bids back next time. And I, I did it that way because there was, one of the bids came with a, some, a contractor that would put them in, but it was, it was unfair to show that bid at this time. I felt anyways. So I, if the council wants to go in that direction, I can bring the bids back, so we can decide on which direction we want to go. And if we still wanted to go at that time with staff installing, then we can move forward with the lowest bid at that time.
Who, who you think, what part, what staff is going to put it in?
Um, David Richardson, Dale, and another Parks and Centers crew member.
Well, you're the one we just said, we just pop them in, Kevin.
That's what I said.
Can these guys do it?
Yeah.
Yeah. No, and I took David over there. Just, I didn't, when I was writing this, we wa, we went over there and made sure this was something we could do.
Not my area. You guys think it's okay?
Maybe we could have Kevin help.
If they don't pop in right, Kevin.
No, bother me.
You can use a popper.
I'll, I'll bring them, I'll bring the window bids back.
And the, and the staff is okay with doing it?
Yeah.
They have the time?
Yeah, they, I think this would be a good fall slash winter project to get it done.
You can only get one or two in a day, that's all you get in.
Yeah. Yep. And then we can come right back to-
Pull one out, replace it, you know?
Yep. So, and we can start on the smaller ones and go bigger, and that way we go faster.
There you go.
Let's just go ahead and, everyone agrees? Gina?
Yes.
I see Bobby saying yes. Gina?
Yes.
Terry? Staff? Staff?
Yep.
Staff? Okay. Verbal consensus of all. All right, next one up. I was having a conversation as I had Kim Barmer with the Kansas Forestry Department in, looking at some trees around town, that we had concerns about, just to make sure we were on the right path. And she started talking to me about tree maintenance for the whole community, and that, how, how it's important for the city to possibly do maintenance, yearly maintenance on tree trimming around town. And this would be to help main, keep trees healthy, identify unhealthy trees so they can be removed, and also keep our high regulations where trucks can get through without hitting and all, and all that stuff. It's, it's helpful all the way around from the tree to the, to the traffic. And this is something, is a touchy subject around here, I feel, because I've been told that the Street Department used to do this, and then it stopped because of concerns around, around the city. So what do you do now? Do you go up and ask them, can we trim your trees? They say yes, you trim them. I say no.
I, I say a good PR, a PR program saying, I don't want to force people to do this, but just basically explaining why this needs to happen. And two, actually, Todd Frye had sent me an email regarding his thoughts on this tree trimming. And he, he asked if we could send them to a school, to how to tree, uh-
Train the staff.
Yeah, train, train the staff on what the proper way, if, that way it doesn't, they don't like kill it or, or look like they're killing it.
How long ago did these people complain?
I'm not sure.
We used to do it when I was on council all the time, before.
We used to trim trees?
Yep, every, every winter, that was just part of the project.
So, and, and we must have more than one complaint, though.
Oh, yeah.
So.
But, but I've had people complain now and say, how come they don't do it? Because they used to, and I wish that they did it. Simply, I mean, you can't, you can't please everybody.
So, did you trim trees for those chip and seal routes?
Yes.
And did anybody complain?
We, we did, we sent letters out 45 days in advance saying, hey, if you want to trim your tree, go ahead and trim your tree. If you don't, we're going to come through and do it for you. And typically, we found that that works out. Now, a mess-
Maybe we should have a tree trimming week or two and let everybody know if they don't want us to trim them, to notify City Hall or something. Or would you do it throughout the year?
I would do a winter project.
Winter?
Yeah, a winter project. And I don't, to, to have a list of where not to trim would be a challenge for our guys. It's either we do it or, or we don't. Because for them to be in, in the bucket truck or in the, in whatever vehicle they are and go, this, this house, no, this house.
I know, it'd be-
That'd be one of those, if we put a letter out or something, that if you don't want the city to trim your trees, please have them trimmed by November 1st.
Oh, that's a good idea.
Because after that, any trees that you have not touched, the city crews will trim.
According to our statutes for disability.
What is our statute on height?
12 feet, which is-
Too low?
Too low.
It needs to be 14, because that's what most state bridges are.
Yeah.
So are we going to change our code?
We, we should look into it, yes.
You want to bring that to us?
I'd be in favor of going to 14 feet on that.
And so you'll bring us a revised code?
Uh, yeah, stand.
And, so, let's go around and make sure everyone's in agreement. I like the letter thing. So they say, we're going to send it out, let us know.
Yeah, we went right-
Yeah.
You could either take care of it or we will. That's what you're going to say, right?
Yep.
Okay, so letter in advance, probably like a 30-day in advance letter, is that what you're thinking?
Well, so if we get them out by the end of this month, that gives them 30 days of October to, to work on it.
Then you can start trimming trees in November December.
And then start November 1st, or could we put it in the next, when the next newsletter come out?
October.
Put it in the newsletter?
You could put it in there too.
Yeah, I'm just thinking.
Because that would still give them that month to remember.
I'm sure Paul could put something in the paper too over there.
Okay, so I'll just have a verbal consensus, you want to proceed with the city doing it? Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, it's fine, I guess.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, verbal consensus, yes? All right.
14 foot.
He's going to bring in the ordinance back.
Yeah.
Yep.
They certainly can't do any worse jobs than West Star or whoever used to go around and do that. They went, they went like, they went like this and trimmed the whole one side of it, you know?
Says, spoken like a true garden plant person.
No, but I mean, they never did ours, but they did the neighbors down there, key capers, and those were the most awful looking trees.
Okay.
You have something else, Austin?
Yeah, I got a couple more things. Next one up, for the fire station, the, the grant needs, the grant application needs basically confirmation on how we're going to fund the fire station. So I, I'm doing research now and talking with Rickens to see what would be the best way to, to handle this. And I'm thinking it's going to be some sort of financing. So I need direction, if there is any. I was thinking, the way I normally do a project or the way I've seen a project done with financing is either temp note or bond, which is, either one would probably work out, but that's why I'm asking the guy we pay to tell us our finances and the guy we would go, be going through because that's in our contract.
Well, I definitely agree that we should give them direction because the next meeting we have is a public hearing, so we should have it kind of nailed down, what we're going to do. So when I looked in the budget, I was, didn't realize that the number that we were talking about in the general fund already includes the bond and interest money transferred in. So that number that we have is...
It should be, oh, it's about 430,000.
441, 430?
Yeah.
Yeah, $430,000. So that's transferring the money from BNI into the general fund and then having $430,000 in the fire department for this. And, you know, when we initially set a million dollars, we had it almost totally funded. So, but you made a comment last night, last meeting, that I think is definitely something we should consider, and that is if we do a temp note and we do it for five, five years, included in the budget right now is $200,000 excluding the 221 attributed to the fire station, right? So if we go ahead and use our mill levy monies to take, instead that 200,000 go on to the fire station next year, it would go to bond payment, debt payment.
2021.
In 2021.
Our first payment would be 2021.
Yeah, so we, I think we could use, just use the mill levy to fund the temp note.
So you would, would we pay the, so that 200 and some that's sitting in the general fund for this year?
The four, we would use the 430 that's in there this, or for 2020.
So 430 in 2020.
Yeah, because we're not going to build until 2020.
Okay, so we would, for the 2021 budget, you're saying we would transfer some of that mill levy over to, probably about four mills.
That's right, about four mills. Because it would be, so we need another $570,000.
Right.
So if you divided that by, with a little bit of interest in there for four years, you have 120 a year, 120,000 a year, and at 30, 30,000 per mill about, it'd be about four mills. But if you figure last in the 2020 budget, we have, excluding the 225, we had 215,000 in the fire department. We still have quite a bit of cushion there to fund the debt payment using property taxes without any increase. Do you guys follow all that?
Yeah.
So if we do a temp note, we don't have to pay Rickens, right?
Any sort of debt we have to pay.
Oh, we do?
Yeah, which is why he, he doesn't recommend, because I've done, I've done where they, you hold the temp note as long as possible, but I think Rick actually makes a recommendation on where you either go temp note or you go bond, right out of the gate, because you, you would only have to pay him once. Because if you do temp note and then bond, is, this is how I understand it, you pay for the, you pay for the temp note, yeah, you pay for the temp note and then you pay for the bond.
Yeah, so I think we, if, I mean, the temp note, that, that 200,000, approximate 200,000 or 120,000 should come every year.
Right.
And we shouldn't have to increase the mill levy.
Right.
And I, I don't think you want to pay for a whole bond council and underwriting and all that stuff for a general obligation debt when we can do it for a five-year temp note. How much are we paying for a five-year temp note?
As far as, I think it's based off of how much...
The amount of the debt?
Yes.
So...
Interest-wise, how much is it?
One and a half to 2%. I think that's the last.
That's a going temp note, right?
For a temp note, yeah, because once you go, well, it depends on how they've changed it. It could be about 3%.
Well, even 3% isn't that bad.
It's reasonable.
So are you wanting a motion to proceed in that manner so that we can, so you can give that to Emily Benedict to build into the public hearing portion for next meeting?
Right, it gives me some backing so I can, so I can actually get, because she'll need, she needs actually a letter from whoever's financing the, the temp note. So we'll have...
But before November 1?
Before, so we can put it in our application, yes.
Oh mercy, okay. And you know, we might want to roll that up just an even 600,000, just to include the cost of Rickens, and in case there's any change orders, surprise, surprise.
Yeah, surprise, surprise.
So, um, so do you want us to make a motion to, this is how we're going to fund it?
Yes.
Okay, so does anybody want to make a motion that we're going to fund it from the general, well, the general fund out of the 430, 430,000 and the remaining 570,000 in a temp note?
Temp notes over five years.
Yeah, I think that makes sense, don't you?
Yeah.
Is that your motion, Cap?
It's my motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Do you guys have questions about that? Anybody have questions? Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Five one? What, what was your suggestion?
To me, we should shave someplace so it's not as big as it is to begin with.
Yeah.
We're going to have a $2 million firehouse in a million dollar town, costs us $6 million a year to keep this place operating.
Well, that's a valid point that are...
I can't, I can't see why we got to have a platinum fire station and go in debt for it. Maybe somebody can't pay their prescriptions because they got their taxes and stuff.
Well, doing this, we'll keep it flat. And I think that too, we have enough cushion in there between the 120 and the 200 that we, that operating expenses that will be higher because of the building will cover because the expenses on that building are not going to go away. The street department's going to take it over, so those expenses won't go away.
Right.
And over here, this is just storage, so our operating expenses for the new firehouse will go up. But I think we'll have enough cushion, well, should have it, like an $80,000 cushion. Do you think that would cover up the difference in operating expenses?
I think so. It's, I mean, it's, I guess it depends on how you operate the, the public meeting room. I, I think the, the new building would be energy efficient as far as, yeah.
You think the new building what?
Will be energy efficient.
Will be what?
It won't be, it will be energy efficient. It won't be draining, heat out the sides, letting water in and all this other stuff. It should be a much, a building for 67 years that'll, or 60 to 70 years that'll be a good fire station.
Okay, I just wanted to see your input. Yes?
People are getting upset about this, just keep going up and up, and they don't understand how these other towns can build fire stations for a lot less and, you know, why Marysville's is costing this much.
I don't know, I don't know how much the other ones cost.
Have they checked the difference between a wooden structure and a, I know the price he quoted when he was here.
We talked, we talked about it. We talked about it and it's, I mean, I think it was a, it was al, it was almost a wash.
Was it really?
Yeah.
You think some of these other near, nearby cities have wooden? Is that what you're saying?
I know they do.
But I, I remember the conversation, I don't know why.
Like I said, I was a part of the, of the deal, so like I said, I'm an outsider looking in and...
Can you remember that conversation?
No, but I was, I was going to think of Gina, the last time, at the last council meeting, you said, can we do fundraisers? And I was thinking, absolutely, because we don't have any interior stuff on this, but in this amount is no interior stuff.
A lot of the other communities did fundraising.
Right, we started out at a million dollars.
In fact, somebody just, one town, I can't remember which one, just did a garage sale.
Again, I think we can, I can, I think we can use that for all the inter, we don't have any furniture or anything in there.
I think it was an option. It was a...
One of the costs?
Yeah, one of the optional costs down below that wasn't included in 1.5, if I, if I saw that right.
Well, why don't, so we're prepared for that question at the public meeting, can you ask some of the cities nearby what their fire stations cost? Is that kind of what you want?
Well, I mean...
Or you want to bring it?
Well, I mean, I mean, but I mean, we started out at a million dollars and now we're up to this and people are, you know, beginning to get really upset about this.
And there's no end to it. It's going to keep going on.
Yeah, I mean...
Well, it's 600,000 more than I wanted it to be.
Well, I know, and people don't quite understand this. I know now we're, the soft cost has ended up being a lot more, that that's 20, almost 20%, you know, which we didn't figure in, but, you know, people don't quite understand why we're, they think we're putting in all this fancy stuff and they're unders, trying to figure out what we're putting in ours that these other places don't have.
And how big are the other places? Are you talking like Axtell or are you talking Blue Rapids or Waterville? I don't think that they're going to have, they don't have the room for the nine bays that we want to have everything contained in.
Well, but Blue Rapids has, Blue Rapids has several bays, I mean, you know.
Well, why don't we, why don't we get the information, if you can get that, Austin?
I mean, we need to get some, we need to get some comparisons with what the others have and what they actually cost and, you know, and I know we probably have extra things that they don't have. I mean, yes, but, you know, there's a lot of difference between a 300 or 400,000 dollar fire station and a 16.
And I, I would question when it was built.
Well, I understand that. I asked that too.
That's a good point. That's a good point.
I asked that too, but you know.
So, so Austin, you're on the job here, just say neighboring communities, how much it cost when it was built and how big it is, right?
And if they did fundraising.
Right.
There, there is one thing, I mean, I know these neighboring communities also did CDBG funding as well, but if one of them didn't, they probably got theirs for a lot less because they're not using federal wage guidelines as well.
Right.
Which is a big, it's a big difference. You go with CDBG funding, you're going to pay the prevailing wages that are the average around the state.
So are you saying that if we bid it out, if we don't get the funding and we bid it out, it could possibly come in at a million as well?
It'd be cheaper, but you won't have the funding. It'd be, it'd be overall price cheaper, more than likely.
But the 600,000 dollars cheaper?
I don't know about that.
Okay.
But wages, they, they do Davis Bacon wages, which is the prevailing wage, and that's required on all federal, federal projects like this.
Okay.
But that is what people are saying, so we just need to be prepared for this.
You know, if you get that information, can you send it out before the public hearing so we're ready to discuss it or, and just so we can all be aware of it? Yes?
Also something to think about because a lot of people are, are saying and feeling that Marysville getting by with what they got, you know, and, which is true, and to say that we're going in debt that way, even though we, you don't have to raise the mill levy or anything, a temporary note and all that, if we didn't build it, we'd have funds to do something else. If we're getting by with what we got, it's just one of those things that people come up and say. And I can understand some of that, it's nice to have a nice firehouse, but we don't need one that everybody drives by and say, oh, hey, let's look, look at Marysville new firehouse.
Well, I think the main thing is this firehouse over here, as far as response time and functionality, it's, I mean, it's just so crowded back there that the men can't go between the trucks and floor and...
I mean, just...
They talk about, the water goes in there.
Yeah, how many times they dump concrete in the shore of the floor up where it's keep settling away and stuff like that over here, so.
If we need new and pretty, we've got to do it.
Well, isn't so much pretty as functionality and that way we're not going to have, well, like was previously said, the cost is big right now, but we're not going to have this cost every five years or 10 years or 15 or 20 years. Hopefully this is something that's going to build, be there for 40 years.
50.
50.
60.
60.
And it doesn't get cheaper from here on out?
No, it won't. If we wait, it doesn't.
I under, I understand that, that this is what people are saying and we need to, you know, be prepared for it.
I was just going to say for the public hearing, I would hope that if people do have concerns that they come on October 14th.
Yeah, on the next council meeting.
Yes, it's the public hearing.
Could we present photos of what it currently looks like?
Yes. That might be included in the public hearing. I'll, I'll ask Emily if she's, if she's doing that already.
So, are we going to have the public hearing early or is it all going to be during city council meeting?
During the city council meeting, under hearings, notice and hearings.
Yeah, so there's no way we can have it earlier than this, before the council meeting?
Just bring a lunch.
Well, we've, we've already...
Dessert at that point.
We already have, but notice that it's that night, right?
Yeah, that's...
No, but I mean, can we have it earlier than 7 o'clock is what I'm saying.
Have we already published it as subject?
I don't know if we publish it or not.
It's an email.
Oh, no, it hasn't gone out. She has to do it a week in advance and she was just emailing me today.
I mean, could you have it at 6 o'clock so that people would feel more comfortable coming at 6 instead of waiting until city council? I don't know if people are going to come at 7 o'clock. I mean, they're not going to have the time to, we're not going to have the time to maybe to discuss it and visit with her if she could come early and they could visit with her before the city council meeting.
What you're doing is you're asking her to be available at 6 o'clock.
Right.
A question period before the hearing.
That way we're not trying to get through a meeting at the same time. I, that might be a good idea.
Q and A at 6 to 7?
Yeah, 6 to 7.
We'll start at 7 and we'll have the public hearing in the council meeting as planned, right?
Right, but if she could be available at 6 o'clock for questioning, for questions so people could come and ask questions would be nice. I mean...
Okay, I will ask.
So, okay, so can we be there, Craig, from a coma standpoint and talk about the fire station? Answer questions or should that just be an Emily thing? Answer questions, or should that just be an Emily thing?
At a public hearing for...
Well, it's a Q and A before the public hearing. I just wanted to know if we, as the governing body, should be here or we should not be here.
I would caution there being a quorum there, because I just think it's...
Why don't we do this? Why don't we have the police and fire committees that was, has been at all the meetings be there? All right?
It's a better idea, just to avoid the...
And we'll just call it as a meeting for the police and fire at 6 o'clock and the Q and A with Emily Benedict will be there. Is that a deal?
I just think, I just think people would feel more comfortable coming early and, you know, questions answered.
The meeting's over.
Okay.
Austin, one more thing. When you call, can you find out if those places also did fundraising and what they use the fundraising for? Just to throw it out there.
And how much it was?
I've been getting that a lot too, so.
Okay. Anything else, Austin?
Next thing. Pro Track and Tennis showed up today, well, I think Kevin says yesterday.
You were actually there Sunday.
They were there Sunday working on it?
I saw them drive through, actually, last week. I didn't know if they were gonna do anything. But, so they went and measured the cracks in the north tennis courts and came out with 552 linear foot of cracks that need to be repaired with their armor crack, repair system, or that they recommend on being repaired before they color coded. So I brought this to you to see what you wanted to do and I talked to their representative and he said if we didn't like this number, we can go out, or I can go out and say, just do these cracks right here and that's all we want to do. But that was, that was when I said, talked to him about this number.
So the total amount, this contract, Austin pulled up, so to color coat was 20,753 and the pickleball lines was 1,000. So it's gonna bring it up to a little over $30,000. Okay.
Total?
Yeah.
With this and the...
And the color coding.
Forty thousand?
Thirty.
Thirty, sorry.
A little over 30,000.
A little over 30,000.
So, you know, this proposal says valid through September 23rd? They've extended that, right?
Well, because we already accepted the proposal. We accepted the proposal.
They didn't have to have it completed by the 23rd?
No.
Okay. So, so where was that money coming out in the budget?
General fund under recreation.
How much did we put in there?
Overall, there's $45,000 taken out of that line, out of 52 for estimation.
But that 50,000 was for light viewing.
Right. But I put this, not this one, but since we weren't going to be doing a whole bunch of improvements this year, because we had planned on doing the sidewalk and doing the...
Yeah, we did do the windows.
We did the windows, but that was $3,000.
Is that all we did?
Yeah. Plus, yeah, plus some extra siding on the side. 3,000 to 4,000, if I remember right. And then I also planned on some for engineering.
So you believe there's 40,000 left in there?
If not, just, I probably just, what was I gonna say? Basically, to cancel all plans for any upgrades to the city hall is basically for this room. Would probably make sure we had enough money for it.
And then how much of a warranty was on this if they, if we do this?
This renewed and redid a five-year warranty.
Extends a five-year. So, did you go look at these 552 feet and none of them have the netting envelope?
None of them have. There's some cracks. He showed me which ones had the armor on it. There was, where the paint was peeling away that he said would look like nothing happened there once he was done. And he said, this is where armor's at. This is a crack and Dale was there. He goes, yeah, this is where we, the city, came in and filled this in and tried to paint it, not paint it, but that's, you can see the stripe.
Oh, you're saying, that was his maintenance work, using that fill stuff that we talked about?
Yeah. So, Dale was like, yeah, that's one we tried to fix ourselves. That's one we tried to fix ourselves. And yeah, I kind of believe him in this whole thing.
So, the way I look at it is, so we have $30,000 for a temporary fix for five years, but the school, if you're gonna think the school is gonna participate, you know, Mary Wasson asked me to go talk to Dr. Guy, and I did go talk to Dr. Guy, and their focus is the Ag building right now, which I know you guys all read about in the newspaper. And so, there's no pot of money for them to draw on for capital improvement. So...
How much is a school paying us currently for use of the facility?
I think it's 1975 a season, isn't it?
1950, I think.
A season?
Twice a year, yes.
So we get basically 40,000 a year, no, 4,000.
So the key was, we thought that it was gonna cost a certain amount to repair these after the five years. So we set up the amount to equal half of it, so they would share in the coating. So it's 3,900 a year and they've paid it for five years, which is 15,000.
Right.
So basically, they paid their half in their usage fees to pay for half of coating it. You could look it up from that perspective?
Yeah.
I don't think this, you know, I don't think the school's gonna have money available for us to do anything in the short term. And, you know, I think that, you know, having the discussions, that she said they would probably be open to maybe something like a larger lease to pay off a part of the capital improvements. But, and I did give her the estimate of, back when we had that, like 1.2 million. And then I did mark off what the essentials, like if we reused the netting and we reused the fencing, you know, the bare bones, just fixing the court would be. And again, she said they wouldn't be willing to, or able to upfront, but they would be able to possibly increase and make a more substantial yearly payment. So with that being said, I'm thinking, you know, this will actually get the north courts in pretty decent shape. Maybe in five years, we can have that all set up to do the, both sets of courts and have an agreement with them. I mean, we can always be hopeful that that's the next step and it's probably gonna take us three or four years to get it done.
I have a question. Were you talking about doing it this fall?
What do you mean?
This.
They're today and tomorrow.
So, what if we have one of our great big winters? We have it fixed. We have one of those great big winters. So they're gonna have a warrant, a five-year warranty?
Yeah. If any of their repairs break, they fix them.
They come back.
They come back and fix them.
Okay. Because they're using the tennis courts now and in the spring?
Yes.
All right.
Plus pickleballers are down there almost every night.
That's pretty cool.
And we're adding those in, yeah.
They're down there now, even though there's no lines?
Well, since...
Do they chalk them out?
They've been playing down there.
Oh, okay. Well, that's good.
Two of the courts had chalk on.
On Monday night, or Thursday nights? Thursday, Monday and Thursday?
I think they mark them as they, when they use them.
Play them? All right, you guys.
We got a contract with this outfit to begin with.
We did. We approved this one.
And what was that figure?
And that was about 21,000, but it, but it had that armor crack repaired, $17 a foot, but we didn't know how many feet.
Okay, so then this is, they got a contract for 21 and then they come in and they found that they want almost 10,000 more, right?
Well, we knew that was gonna be...
That's what I didn't understand to begin with, when they...
Do you wanna, you guys wanna see this contract, so you guys know? That was the contract we approved in July 8th.
Then all of a sudden, they need another 9,000 on top of that, right?
Well, we always knew there was gonna be an amount, but we didn't know the amount. Did you guys wanna see it?
I'm sorry.
It's okay. I understand.
You guys wanna see this?
Yeah. We just didn't know how much the amount was gonna be.
We didn't know how many linear feet it was gonna be.
It's gonna need repair.
So...
And we knew there was quite a bit there.
Well, we've already approved this one.
Yeah.
We just have to approve the linear feet charge. But I think the good thing is that it would keep our north five, our north three courts in good shape.
Yeah, I do too.
And it will give us pickleball courts.
There you go.
So, I would enter a motion to approve the change order if you guys desire.
Make a motion to approve the change order to Pro Track and Tennis, an amount of $9,384.
Come out of the general fund? Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Six, all right. Anything else, Austin?
That is the last thing I have.
Well, I thought we should probably discuss this visioning meeting.
Oh, go for it.
Because it's October 7th and it's before the next meeting. So, did you send this out to everybody or not yet?
Notes? Did you include Cindy on this?
I didn't send any notes to anybody.
Okay, so, so we had a conference call regarding, you know, the economic development dollars with K-State. And October 7th is their big day. They're gonna be here from 9 to 5. And the really important part was to having stakeholders involved, having community leaders there sharing. We're gonna, all the stakeholders, stakeholders being businesses, developers, bankers, businesses, Main Street.
Citizens, yeah.
Yeah, citizens. So, so they're gonna drive around. So there's, as I read this, there's three opportunities to discuss with these stakeholders, with the leader, which is Sushi, Sush. And she said she will want to interview knowledgeable civic leaders, stakeholders and others with institutional knowledge about the community. Those conversations can take place in city hall while the students are busy, with the 9 to 10 driving tour, the 10 to 1:30 lunch hour, and the 1:30 to 2:30 backfield, small group activity. So there's lots of times that people can come and share and get input. But the two big areas are the depot planning and the urban planning group. And so, we, there's an itinerary talk and we kind of planned out what we believe is gonna happen that day. I guess I just need to make sure that, Austin, you're gonna take over this as far as you're gonna get the invites out?
Right.
And you're gonna keep the council informed how we're doing, maybe on your highlights, say I've contacted them. We have people willing to participate, things like that. And obviously, you'll have an RSVP of what stakeholders are coming. You know, you're, all of you are welcome to invite anybody you want to participate in this, because it's not like limited to anyone. The key thing is that, and as far as creating the student maps, the driving tours, are you gonna do that, Austin? Are you gonna work with Michelle, maybe?
I think...
I mean, I'm trying to figure out what our responsibilities. I don't wanna let this creep up on us and we're not prepared. There's 42 students coming, so you don't wanna be caught off guard without, without being prepared for these students. So, the date there in town is October 7th and then there's two more Zoom conferences, which is October 23rd for the depot and October 24th on the urban design and development. And then Wednesday, November 6th, is when there's gonna be a public exhibit in an open house where the students are gonna share with the community what they have designed. Gina, maybe this is part of your bailiwick. Do you wanna help with the planning of the student tours or, I mean, these are all landscape architecture students who, that's not my strength. I could take some of the accountants around, but, so maybe Gina can help you too and maybe Michelle will be creative. We need, you need some creative juices there.
No, we, yeah, because we need to send them to the right places.
But I think we need to get the invites out as soon as possible. And if you wanna send out these itineraries to the council so they know what to plan for. But I didn't understand until I just read this, how the stakeholders, while the students are busy, are gonna be talking to the professor, like what we foresee our community, the vision of our community. So it's really important that we have some people, and you can send them out the list of stakeholders. I gave it and Cindy added to it, just to have an idea of who we suggested should be participating in it. And they, like I said, you're welcome to invite anybody you want to participate in it. So you'll get that out to everybody?
Yep.
Okay. So it's kind of a big deal. I mean, this is kind of, it's kind of been going on in the background and we haven't, and now the Zoom meeting and October 7th is just two weeks away. So, okay. You guys have any more questions about that? Or you'll get that information out maybe sometime tomorrow?
Yep.
And the only other question I have for you, Austin, is, did a tax sale sell anything for the city of Marysville last week?
They had two properties. I don't know how much they sold and I forgot to go to it. There were two inconsequential pieces of properties.
Inconsequential?
Inconsequential.
Small, small price properties, that's what you're saying?
There were ones we couldn't use.
Okay. That the city of Marysville sold?
That were in the city of Marysville.
But they weren't our properties?
They're not our properties.
Okay, okay. I was just wondering. I didn't follow up. Anybody else have questions for Austin? All right, we will move on to standing committees. Do you, do you know a status of this cost share, KDOT cost share program? Have you talked to Tony?
I've talked to Tony. He was gathering information as of Friday, so he was still working on it.
So that's due October 11th?
October 11th.
So you're just, guys are gonna submit it without us taking a look at it, right?
He's gonna get, if everything, if there's nothing odd on it, I think we should just submit it. But if there's something out of the line, we...
You can call a special meeting?
Call a special meeting.
Okay. I, KDOT did have a webinar. Did anybody else listen to that? So they get a webinar and it talked about this and they specifically said there's two pots of money, 11 million, which is a 15% match. That's the ongoing portion they expect. But this 50,000, 50 million is a one-time pot of money. So that's a big deal, although it's a 25% match. And the other thing, they said, the sooner to put the money to work, the better. You know, they, they want it used right away. And the other thing they said is, make sure you tell a story. Well, we have a great story about that property, how we didn't do everything right. I don't know how you're gonna present that. But, you know, the road plan, how the development kind of evolved. But they said it's really important to tell a story. So I'll communicate that to you. And then the other thing I saw was from the federal US Department of Transportation, they've launched a sustainable pavements program. And you can do a webinar about pavement sustainability basics. So I signed up for that. It's on October 17th. Have you ever done one of these with...
No, I have not.
With the US Department of Transportation? But it says sustainable basics and then sustainable pavement materials. So if you guys wanna sign up for these webinars, let me know. But I thought it was important for us. Have you seen any of this before?
No, no. That's the first I've seen that.
Yeah. Do you want, you want me to get copies for you or? Actually, you can, the first webinar isn't till 10/17, so you could include it in the packet next time.
Is that something that we could have, like our city guys?
You would think, yeah.
I think it would be very good for them if that's what this is for.
I mean, it's for, it says, "To advance the knowledge and practice of sustainability related to pavement."
Yeah.
"The overall objective of this program is to increase the awareness, visibility and body of knowledge of sustainability considerations in all stages of the pavement lifecycle."
See.
That's pretty big, lots of big words there. But I think, I think it's just information to grasp and for us to know.
And does this cost us anything?
No.
Well, there you go. You know, free knowledge.
Yeah. So it's just a webinar. You sign up for it, so...
How long is it?
Well, it didn't say how long it was.
I would have to check it out and see.
Can we get a copy of that?
We'll send it out.
Well, I mean, for the guys, you know, the smart guys.
I'll ask them if they've already gone through our program.
Does it have times on it?
She said it did, yeah.
Although I did sign up for it and they did send me another email, so if it tells me a time, I'll let you know.
Yeah, it's like, it's pretty much during the day he's out for...
Yeah. The 10/17, what day of the week is in?
Or how long it lasts.
That's a Thursday.
Well, the KDOT one was limited to an hour. I mean, it was just one hour. And so I can't imagine it's an all-day thing.
Well, that's, I mean...
Webinars usually aren't, are they?
No.
It's probably not gonna be an evening thing, though.
Probably not.
Probably not.
That's what I was meaning.
We'll hook your phone up to it so you can...
Yeah. But anyway, that's my two street things. You guys got something on the street?
Yes, I do. Good Shepherd School. There's a hot hole going into that driveway on the south side that you can drop a car tire in.
Talk to Good Shepherd School to get that fixed.
The entrance, the entrance?
The entrance into it. I mean, you really noticed how many...
You can drop a what into it?
A car tire into it. It's that big round, probably eight wides, so we need to get it fixed.
Okay.
Anything else, Christian?
Yeah. The guys are doing a great job. The streets are looking good for the shipping seal, yeah.
So you've done two of them, right?
Two of them, yeah.
So it seems like there's a lot of extra rock. Am I crazy on this?
There might be.
Or haydie.
Because they, we got one more, one more hole chute to go. The trucks that carry oil, apparently they changed the regulations, so they can only carry 5,800 gallons on them rather than 6,000. So three chutes. So, three chutes might not get what it used to, so we might have some extra haydie.
Because I heard we didn't get all of our blocks covered, too.
What do you mean?
In the route?
In the routes, because I heard there was notes that were out on people's houses, and we, they, the streets never got shopped that day.
Oh.
So, I don't know if we come up short on a seal route somewhere.
We got a little short, because it was six-
16, 17.
We got a little less than 17 on the second route, and I think 16 on the first one. So, it, it could have been, we didn't, just didn't get there.
Right.
Yeah, I just noticed that, like, on Eighth Street over here, it seemed like there was a lot of extra rock, can you-
Today, they picked it all up.
No, we, street swept, yeah.
Yeah, once we pick it up, can we reuse it somewhere?
We'd probably reuse it, but it, it's not gonna be as useful as it was before we laid it down.
Yeah, so-
We, we probably have some sort of use for it.
Purpose for it?
Yeah.
Okay, because I know we'd pick it up with the street sweeper, and then we'd pile it up.
Yeah.
Okay. But no, I'm, I'm really grateful they're getting that done.
Yep.
Anything else on streets? Water sewer? Parks wreck?
Hold it. How they coming with the sewer line on the highway?
I think it's done.
Okay, so they shouldn't be holding up anything else on this project?
They haven't, they, it was, it wasn't holding anything. They took one more day than they, than was necessary, but the part, part of the street they were on, everybody else was working up north. So, it, they had all the space they needed, and they were getting it done. Yep.
If you say so.
Yeah, they were-